I think the best way to start as an incumbent is for you to just take a minute or two to reflect on what you feel these four years have been like and what you've been able to accomplish that you had set out to when you ran four years ago.
That's exactly where I like to start, so great. Because I do look back on why I got in the race, you know, in 2009. And I remember the moment that somebody said, "Nobody's really talking about what Palo Alto's going to look like in five years or 10 years." And I said, "Good question. Let's start talking about that." And this was when, you know, I'd already had a meeting at my home where we were learning about the impact that High Speed Rail was going to have in Palo Alto. And we were very concerned. Two of the, you know, members of CARD exchanged hands. They ended up exchanging phone numbers to develop their shared interest. And, you know, our neighborhood kind of did the rendering that brought it to the city council to say, "People can't sell their homes right now." And at that same time, we were, then the teenage, you know, stress emerged. And I just felt like it was time to go ahead and take some of my tools that I'd learned working in the community over the years in PTA and then also with other groups and agencies that I'd been with to see if I could get on city council. And so I do go back to my strategies of, you know, reaching out and trying to develop, you know, consensus from the community to see what their thinking is throughout, you know, as much as we can. And then trying to collaborate with people to get things to happen and to change the experience. And so I think that I have brought a lot of value to the community to try to get that to be instilled in the way we are operational today. High Speed Rail has left us very different than when we started. We learn how impactful state mandates are. We knew what they were before, but they have intensified since I got elected. Just watching, you know, the way Menlo Park had to handle their housing element in 2012. There's a lot of different influences that come into Palo Alto. And so I do like to face those head-on and try to get a strategy in place so that we can find a way forward with some very messy conversations. So I've tried to bring that into my year as mayor to do the "Our Palo Alto" so that we have that big, broad democratic conversation about our future. And right now, we're in the middle of that. And so it's not clear exactly what the conclusion is, but it's leading us right into, you know, our comprehensive plan, which I'm trying to stay focused on, along with all the other things that we've outed that we have to get done. So that's...
Great. I want to read to you something you said four years ago in this very interview.
Uh-oh.
Because I think it follows up nicely from what you just said. You said, "There's this feeling that we are losing the values that we moved here for. It's hard to exactly identify what those values are. There's a certain type of community feeling that Palo Alto has. We all know what it feels like. We know how to be a member of a community. And as we look at these big agendas coming from outside of Palo Alto, I would like our community to hold together and maintain their focus as we make these decisions so we can propel Palo Alto forward." So what has changed in four years that has benefited from your being on the council having spoken those words four years ago?
Well, I think we are strategically ready to operate. Just two weeks ago, when the legislation season was over, the state mandates are coming down. They're just fluid from Sacramento right now. And we got our letters in, you know, veto this and let this go through. So we are much more aware, much more connected to our neighboring cities and in the region. And I felt that that was important for me, to be able to find others that had the same sensibilities that Palo Alto had. The other thing that I've been working really hard with staff on this year and towards the end of last year, when it looked like I was going to be mayor, about reminding them to be personable, to make contact with the community. Don't just expect the community to come to us. And so I have done that in many ways. We pivoted as quickly as we could after we got dug out from High Speed Rail and other things that were on our agenda into traffic and parking. We've been, you know, getting those data points in. They're coming in now, but we've ordered all of that work to try to figure out exactly who's parking downtown and that type of thing. So I think that we are in a period of time where we're unrolling things in a way that will hopefully have an impact on some of the angst that's going on. I don't mind talking about any of that, but it is, you know, it still is a big, broad conversation.
How do you respond and feel about the comments that are made toward this council that the actions that you've taken in the last few months have been geared largely around responding to the voters' decision on Measure D and in positioning for this election?
I have not heard that.
You have not heard that?
No. So, no, I haven't. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Where would I have heard that?
It's widely...
The actions of council?
Why do you think...
So the actions on our agenda? So the agenda items are strategic for this election?
That after the results of the Measure D election...
Okay.
The council pivoted on a variety of things and tried to accelerate a lot of things to respond to that voter sentiment. And that those of you running for reelection have tried to position yourself to respond to those voters. I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, but would you, do you feel that that is in fact what's happened, is the council responded to the outcome of Measure D?
I think the outcome of Measure D had, has a long story to it. There's, you know, we did get a lot of emails about, "I hope you know what this means," you know, Measure D. And in its isolated form, it was just a repeal of changing a zoning that, you know, the community members decided not to support the council on. So I think, and we did bring the PC forward, you know, the PC zoning forward this year to time it out. We call it a timeout because moratorium is a hard word to use with land use. And I've just been very reflective of the things that have gone on that I've been waiting to pounce on. And so I guess maybe I have a different perspective on this in that I saw the long list that Jim had outed when he was doing the summary of the 2013 and picked up that list and said, "What else do we need to get on this so we can stay focused and start to peel off some of the work that really has been there?" You know, comprehensive plan included, such a huge thing. And how are we going to pick up the pieces of everything? I have felt throughout my time on council that we were still not bringing the community in enough. So that was always something that I felt that we needed to pivot on right away.
So in your mind, there wasn't any message, political message, to the Measure D election?
Okay. I do have trouble with the term "political" in Palo Alto only because we don't have the parties in the lineup and, you know, it's sort of a briefing as to what, if you're Republican or Democrat, but...
No, I don't mean partisan message.
Yeah.
Just...
Okay, thank you.
Were the voters expressing some sentiment? Or was that simply a vote on the details?
No, no. I think they were expressing a sentiment that we weren't listening. And I wanted to change that sentiment. That's something that, you know, was becoming more and more apparent. We were having our housing element go through. You know, we, you know, I was the one who put together, asked my colleagues, you know, to not help the, you know, behind closed doors on the housing element, which was happening. And I asked them to know, "Put that committee out there in the public with a school board member so that we can start to wrestle with..." What I thought the two biggest things were when I got on council, which was housing and the A-bag units and the train, the high-speed train, and the wall and the impact that that would have of urbanization in Palo Alto. And I have to say, I was puzzled by how we had an outed committee, you know, and yet nobody really showed up to hear what was going on. So I think that's what brought me to the considerations, that we had to go and start reaching out into coffee shops and we had to meet people in their very busy lives. Because those that can come can be retired and have discretionary time, and this is how they choose to do it instead of being with something else. And so I really believe in trying to have that type of rigidity and security so that people know that when we're, when we're trying to go forward, we've had those debates. And so I apologize for being dense on that, but that was just a natural instinct for me. And I have my roots in PTA and stuff where that's what you did. You sat there and you went nose... I've watched people go, you know, nose-to-gone, in the same room, you know, arguing about, "What is public education and, you know, how do we fund it?" And all that sort of, sort of thing. So I know Palo Alto likes that, so I wanted them to have it. And so that's what I was hoping to be able to springboard into. I did not realize that it was a setup for an election, though. I apologize for not catching that, so...
So, not to put too fine of a point on this, but I kind of want to get to the broad concept here. So the election's been portrayed by some as sort of a contest over different visions for the future of Palo Alto. And I'm wondering if you feel like we are at some sort of turning point right now?
Absolutely. You know, either we're going to create that vision together, you know, and with the strategic elements that come with a comprehensive plan, which makes you do the stakeholder outreach meetings, and I was hoping that they would be very rigorous. Or we continue to allow things to go into the council meetings, you know, and see how it turns out and how things develop and, you know, what bubbles up and what we have to take on. So, you know, when I sat down early this year to go through the ticking points of what I felt was elements in the community that were troubling, all of them could be handled in the process of outreach, rigorous outreach, community debate and dialogue, get our ideas in, and then shape that into the process of getting to the comprehensive plan, which is four years out of date now. And so I've been working on that along with the other 33 items we have on our list of things to do, which is no small feat with some of them, you know, so I...
So what do you think are some of the troubling items? The, what's at stake right now for Palo Alto?
I think being able to keep the conversation in its, in the spirit of community as we look at who we are, because I think that our identity in town is often different from out of town. We are looked at as a very successful, you know, it-spot to be and/or to look like or to try to mimic. We also have really changed the world with a lot of the research that's gone on here and the economic sectors that have tumbled out of that research. And we have to try to figure out how to balance who we are and how we want to have that reliable, you know, lifestyle that we've really appreciated in our neighborhoods and in our experience. And we're not having that once we go out of our neighborhoods. And I do know that it's across the board in the Bay Area, you know, BART is not working on time, too. So it is not just a Palo Alto thing, but on the other hand, I'm here in Palo Alto. I'm dealing with, you know, this is my focus, and so this is what I'm interested in working through.
So you're talking about economic pressures and pace of change that's...
No, I think, I think how we want to grow and the, and if, if we want to keep a plan that allows us to grow, you know, like it has been, people are complaining a lot about the new commercial space that is just across the board permitting, you know, with some of the commercial that's going, that's getting developed right now. We only get something, as you know, if there's a need to have permission to get it, you know. Some exchange or a zone change, which we've basically made sure staff knows that they don't take an application on zone change. So it's a, it's a time where I'm, I'm very concerned about certain areas, California Avenue in particular, Fries area. Those are big passions of mine to make sure that we get to design it before somebody else gives us something we have to, you know, react to and respond to, to their, what they want to do. So it's the same, it's, it's the same story of High Speed Rail coming and saying, "This is what we want to do to your community," only it's us this time. And so I do, so I'm very impatient with that. And so I am interested in seeing if we can't get, you know, the, the design plan moving very quickly with California Avenue so that we can have some security there. But there's also other things that the update of the comprehensive plan will be able to do, too, so...
So are you envisioning pushing for and adopting zoning changes prior to the implementation of a completed comprehensive plan?
Well, we do have a couple things on the table right now. Obviously, we're going to come in, so we're supposed to come back on the 6th of October with a study session on planned community zoning. So there's that zoning. And then we have the sidewalks, the build-to line along Al Camino and the Al Camino design guidelines, if we want to put them into code and not just keep them as design guidelines, which I think staff has iterated what their work plan is, which is, most of this is obviously planning department-heavy and centric. And they also are going to be coming forward when we look at the scenarios again for the comprehensive plan to see if they have the capacity to maybe take one element and do it specifically. So that's a conversation I don't mind having. My focus, of course, would be the California Avenue area because I think that that's the area that is going to change dramatically, you know, if Fries leaves and all of that, that there is zoning there that is different from what it is today, that will be a shock and a surprise to the community.
So let me just use an example of the project that you all approved at 3159 Al Camino. That's the Equinox...
Right.
The 74,000 square foot office building...
Right.
In the Equinox property.
Right. Yes.
The, the council approved that basically because it wasn't asking for a PC zone, it wasn't asking for any particular variances. You granted them a slight variance to the height limit for some trade-off value that you got from that project. But doesn't that project just epitomize the problem that we face in this community of having a zone that allows a project to come in and get a building permit essentially with no ability to deny it at the scale that that is and with the impacts that it's going to have?
That is, I believe, one of the outcomes that was a learning curve, you know, during the Maybell, because it's, it's exact same thing. Density bonus law was not part of our code, so if people would go and look at our code, they wouldn't find density bonus law because the density bonus law was used on that site, which did, which did supersize it.
As it will be on many, many sites unless you do something.
Exactly. Exactly. And so for me, the question has been, and I've been working hard on this with many people, not just our own staff, but other people that are skilled in planning for city planning. And again, the one, there were a couple features about that where there was no net news square footage, you know, as you know, on that building. And that the mechanical floor of 16 feet above the 50-foot height was only used by five feet, and we would have had that five feet anyway whether we allowed them to use the interior. And that he combined lots so that he did walk away from another 5,000 square feet of buildable square footage, had he done independent projects on each of the lots that he had. So I think that there was more to that project than just exactly going into the calendar and getting a permit. And yet that is what is starting to roll out now, whether you're downtown Palo Alto or on Al Camino. And that is what is surprising people, that, you know, the orchard was zoned R15, you know, and then density bonus law would allow for the type of capacity. It was a shock to everybody, I think. But this is part of, of, you know, the, the response that we're trying to have in a safe way. The way I understand it is that if you have an out-of-date comprehensive plan and then you go and change zoning, you might not have the security to keep the zoning change. And I've been, you know, asking that question by many people in land use, and they feel that that will bring you the resiliency of do the type of zone change that you want to do that would reduce FAR. Now, in the meantime, there are options to timeout applications and things like that that I think staff is willing to let us go ahead and venture with them, which we did with the study session we had.
So what is your position on that? What would you like to see happen in the interim?
In the interim? My, my ideal...
In the interim, if the comprehensive plan is adopted?
Yeah. I, I would like to keep going on the comprehensive plan so that we can get to that point of certification and then, you know, have, do the zone changing. In the meantime, I would like to take a specific look at California Avenue and see what we can do to try to bring concept plans there that would allow for us to make sure it stays eclectic and not to Castro Street. I don't, you know, I think Castro Street's wonderful, but it's not the vision I had for California Avenue. So I want to make sure that we have that eclecticism that Palo Alto really does love about where we live. And so, but I also want to be able to go there safely and to be able to incorporate some of the ideas that other cities have already done with metering applications so that it's not just a fire hose of applications. Whoever gets there first, they get to do it. And, you know, other communities have already put that into place, and the concepts travel in with the comprehensive plan or the general plan. And so I want to make sure we get there because right now we'll be six years out of date by the time we certify it. And that I have concern with.
There's been some concern about the loss of sort of mom-and-pop retail...
Right.
From our city.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering what it is that you might be in favor of as far as restricting who moves in or the types of places?
Right.
What can we do to ensure that there's still shops that are, you know, reasonable for the residents here?
Well, I think, and that dovetails with, with neighborhood centers, you know, with grocery stores, you know, that are popular. And we've, I think we've lost grocery stores. Well, we have done something. We have done a grocery floor underlay with Molly Stone's. So if anything does happen there today, you know, there would be a grocery store tomorrow. And there are techniques, and that's one of the things I would love to work with the merchants on here, the merchants and the neighborhoods in California Avenue, to see if we can't get some of that type of keepsake of, of the California Avenue area. I'm not, the, operate, what we've got going on downtown is to do the study of all the retail, you know, ground-floor retail, because that is pushing itself out, you know, where I just heard complaints that we have Coldwell Banker and the old Bluechuck Cafe, and it's like, well, that's on the other side of Hamilton. So when do we officially go ahead and say that's part of the shopping area, you know, of university? That is not really defined, and we do have that as something that we've given staff direction on, but the other things that are coming forward are, are critical, I think more critical right now.
Yeah, there's both the fake retail, the fake retail...
Right.
Where offices move into real spots, but there's also the concern about chain stores. And do you support any kind of restrictions?
I, I would like to investigate that. That is something I have said publicly. I don't know how you do it. Because it is a, we are in market forces here, whether it's your home or whether it's your business. And gentrification here looks very different than others where, you know, when your oil and lube shop goes away, the boutique moves in or the restaurant, and that is really not, you know, that means our services are pushed farther out. And so you're asking the big question is how do we keep that bundle? And other communities have been able to put a formula together, and I'm very interested, very supportive of having that come forward with the different types of options that we could put into place so that we could have that kind of resiliency and security. Absolutely.
I'm not sure I understood or heard you specifically say your opinion about the ground-floor retail restrictions downtown and whether something like what the Institute for the Future qualified, according to staff, as a retail establishment, whether some changes needed there or not. You mentioned the Bluechuck Cafe space, but that's not even in the current...
No, it isn't.
Restricted area. So is your view that A, we need to further restrict the current area that is limited to ground-floor retail? And B, expand that area to a wider part of downtown?
Well, see, the, just, there is one hiccup, and I hate to say this, but when I look at retail and I look at that watch shop down there at the train station at California Avenue across from the fountain, and I go, "Oh, my goodness, you know, that's retail." No show space and things like that. And Cal, in university, used to be a place where you could walk in and get your insurance, you know, your auto insurance or your, or your, you know, your home insurance. And those are some of the old shops that used to be downtown. And all of those, I think, need to be transitioned into retail. But some of them really do have a hard time in retail with the way they've been designed. And that's where sometimes design interferes with the impact of having them be retail. So I would like to encourage them. I think that there was that concept where when they do have the gap and they change over, that they, that when they do pull a permit to prepare it for retail so it really has the type of window space and open retail access that, to be successful.
So should Institute for the Future be...
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to, you, I didn't realize it was specific to Institute.
Well, I'm just trying to get a, for a specific answer.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So using that as an example...
I, I don't, you know, Institute, I don't think should be ground-floor, but I think that, I've also watched shops go in and out of business there, right there. Throughout my life, I've never even walked into any gro, any retail shop there when it was the bathtub store. And then it went into a gallery, you know...
But should, do you think that should be the measure, is whether, whether a location has had, been able to be successful as a retail establishment?
Well, I think that there has to be a success factor. And so if, if people are not looking for retail there, then should we force it into retail? So I think it is something that you have to study, but I would like to see much more retail downtown, you know, Palo Alto. I'm, okay, yes, I would like to see that retail, but on the other hand, I've seen shops fail there my entire time I've, you know, been around that shop. So I want to see it successful also. So how can we make it successful? And maybe it's just more retail around there that makes it successful, so...
I wanted to ask you if there's any vote that you've cast that in hindsight you would switch your vote on?
Oh, yeah.
Can you tell us about that?
Um, you know, I'm confident, I mean, hindsight is always 20/20, as you know. I wish that I had voted for Yawe's interest to do the neighborhood program, the grants program. And I really wanted it to go to the Human Resources Commission to see how the cultural experience was happening, and they were having it go over to Park and Recs instead. And so I voted against it, and I thought, "That was silly. I should have voted for it." I wish I'd had better information to maybe ask for eight houses on the Maybell site, which, you know, was told by the neighborhoods that, you know, eight houses on, for, for market on Maybell would have, they would have been able to have handled that. I think that there's a project there that I haven't gotten one email yet on for the application that's going in there, so good for them to get a project that I hope they're happy with. But, you know, those are just two that are probably not, I mean, the Maybell one obviously was a big one. I'm not sure I would have gotten, you know, support from colleagues, but at that point in time, I wish that that had been a different vote.
Okay. Well, we're on the top of the Maybell. I did want to ask you, you're big on outreach, and there was clearly a failure in that process to engage the public.
I still hear, yeah.
And I'm wondering what happened? What went wrong such that there was such a surprise on the part of the residents?
I think if I lived in the neighborhood, I'd be able to tell you better. We used our new process, you know, which is to have a pre-application study session, which we had changed when I got on council. We, Policy and Services, did that outing of the plans, you know, 10 days early. Hold still, go dark, don't talk to the applicant until after it clears commissions. It was written about in the paper, all of the traditional techniques for outreach. And then all of a sudden, for council, it was like at the maybe ninth or 10th hour, 60 days ahead of time, there was the real disruption, which apparently had been going on earlier, but not communicated back. So obviously, we got that wrong. I mean, just wrong all day. So, and we are looking at that. And one of the interests I have is to, one of the, in, one of the outcomes that I learned about in High Speed Rail was context-sensitive solutions. And I've... And I've thought that that would, I've actually asked for us to look at that in the comprehensive plan process because we do have a couple, completely undeveloped areas in Palo Alto. And that being one of them, 27 University is another one where it's, we've never really had an impact of, of a real project. And that's where context-sensitive solutions brings the community in as the project is designed and allows the design to be crafted with the tools and the techniques that are, that are used to bring, bring about whatever the change will be. And I think that then we could have gone outside our boundaries of gee, there's a street here that we could either shift the street over here or something like that. We could be better engaged at a more comprehensive level. And those are proven strategies that we fought for in the high-speed rail process and that Caltrain, Caltrans has used in the highway projects when they have to do an exit or get rid of an exit or do something really dramatic. And that brings the neighborhoods together with the project that needs to get processed. And I, I think we can get to that, you know, during, I've already seen it outed a little bit in the comprehensive plan concepts, context-sensitive, context-sensitive solutions. That was the CSS that we talked about a lot in committee.
I want to ask you about your vote to approve the 101-litton so-called Gateway Project PC.
Right.
That PC was the first, to my recollection, where the public benefit was entirely money, cash paid by the developer to the city.
Yes, yes.
We gave that developer 50,000 square feet where he otherwise would have been able to develop 17,000 square feet. And the city got some $4 to $5 million in cash for that delta. Can you explain why you supported that PC?
17,000 was the original? Okay, I'm sorry.
Is only about a 17,000 square foot.
Okay, because it was 50-foot high on this side and 35-foot on the other side. And we brought it up to 50 feet across the board, so it's a 50-foot-high building. In the developer's due diligence period and his outreach to the community, it was represented to us that there was still an interest in keeping the 50-foot height limit. We were in a period of exploration about looking at certain sites around town and that came about in 2010 when I first got elected and we met on the comprehensive plan that there could, that staff was allowed to explore 60-foot-high limit. And that, of course, has been retracted now, but, so during that due diligence, there was a, and it's in the staff report, it was, there was a clear indication that the solution to the parking issues downtown could be resolved much more impactfully if we could build a new garage than if we kept the housing on the top floor. And so the $2 million that we got for the, in Luffy for parking, the requirement to do a valet parking and to do transit-oriented development, so to offer go passes or echo passes to mitigate the portion of parking that was not captured, that would have been captured today with, because we've gotten rid of the parking exemptions, helped us with that along with getting the, I think, $1.3 million in affordable housing funds instead of having them build out the, the units that they said were going to be very expensive to build. We felt that we could get more housing units that way. So at that point in time, in that moment in time, people that have been working with the developer agreed that this is, you know, how they wanted to see us go forward. Not everybody agreed on it, but that seemed to be the wise way to go forward on this project at that point in time.
Is that one of those votes you would take back or do you still believe that that was the right, the right vote?
Well, if I were voting on it today, of course, I wouldn't vote that way today, but at that point in time, the concept.
Why wouldn't you vote for it that, that way? I mean, you wouldn't be able to vote for it that way today because you put a hold on the PCs, but is that what you mean or you would vote against it?
No, no. Well, I think that one of the concerns that I had, that I then wanted to change, was the fact that the developer did all of the outreach with the neighborhood, that we weren't included in that. And that bothered me a lot, that he came to strike the deal with the downtown north neighborhood and got some of the neighborhood leaders there to agree that this was the project that they were fine with. And I was really puzzled by that. I thought that that was work that we should be doing as a community. So that's why I was very interested in us picking that up. And that actually, the one other element that I got in there in the motion was to go ahead with the downtown trigger. The trigger to do the cap study for downtown was 225,000 square feet. This was 210. We were obviously already in a problem down there that was emerging while we were walking out of, while we were in the middle of the high-speed rail and we were in the middle of the Stanford Hospital developing. So a lot of those, those were in play at that time. So actually, so I have more information today about what downtown north would like to have as an experience than I did then. Then the experience was being told to me through that project and I don't like that. That really offended me. So I would, so today I have more information from both of the neighborhoods that are really impacted with the worker. That's what I mean by it would probably be a very different vote today.
Looking at Caberly, the Advisory Committee had completed its work with the recommendation that by the end of last year, there should be some forward progress on the renewal of the lease, et cetera. And you were on the Policy Advisory Committee, I believe?
Yes.
That sought to move quickly.
Right.
Closed session in May 2013.
Yep.
Took your colleagues by surprise or some expressed that.
I'm sorry, what, what was by surprise?
The closed session that was scheduled.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm wondering what at this, what, what has gone off the rails with this process and how are we going to get it back moving forward?
Well, I think we've been public about what our interests are because we did go public. I've, this year I have held, I had that scheduled to go open session and then into closed session so that we don't have that problem again because I did not agree with going straight into closed session, but I was not in, no, I was, I was, no, I was, I objected to that. But it was not, not because we didn't have things to talk about officially that we were allowed to talk about in closed session. I felt that the community definitely needed to hear our response to their report and how we wanted to start to shape the conversation. Caberly is such an impactful community center now, miserably unmodernized and very sketchy at all levels now with, you don't even know how to drive through the parking lot anymore. So getting it back on track, I'm, I'm sorry to say, but we've had a shift in the superintendent and he was the negotiating party for the school district. There still is an interest, obviously, that, I'm not sure if the school district shares our, our, you know, what we've offered, you know, what we've directed our city manager to negotiate with the superintendent. So, you know, I can only talk about what I want. I, I would like to see a long-term lease so that we can go ahead and start putting capital improvement dollars into it. We have capital improvement dollars that we put into it every year and every year we stall them out because we don't have, you know, certainty as to how long we'll have it. And I don't think that that's a good way to plan in a community. So I, I think that, you know, hopefully we'll get something by the end of the year, but I think Mac's coming on board with the super, as new superintendent. I'm sure that he'll be sitting down with Jim as, as soon as they can and as soon as he can, but he's got his plate full too, so.
The council and, and you personally have made your apologies for the handling of the Ariaga proposals and the closed set, the closed-door meetings that were held. I'm wondering if you could take us back to those meetings. You've said publicly that you can't recall that those meetings consisted of anything but being informed about what was taking place, that there were no deliberations, et cetera. But you are all aware that there was a conscious strategy on the part of the city staff to inform you individually about a project and get your feedback on it prior to public discussion. Is that one of those things that you regret having participated in at this point? Or is, are the grand jury's criticisms really not fair giving away the real world works?
Oh, no. I think that clearly the grand jury was fair with, you know, what we failed on. There's, there's no excuse for that. You know, it's, I think though that being in the moment, sitting down with John Ariaga and having him present you with what he wants to do and if I don't like it, he's not going to do it and he'll just go away. I guess I just kept thinking the project was going to go away because I didn't, I didn't like it and I knew some of my colleagues wouldn't like it. So I was a little surprised to learn that he was willing to work with somebody else besides his own architect on it. So, so sitting in the meetings, yeah, I, I should have asked the city manager to bring them forward to the public venue, of course. And yet at the same time, I was never sure how stable that project was during the process either. He also, you know, made the application during that time with Menlo Park. And so it was sort of, it was puzzling to see, you know, all of the developments that were going on around that time, along with all the other things we were doing in the city. So of course I would have liked to have seen that come forward earlier, yes.
There aren't a lot of things that the mayor gets to do that are different than the other members of the council, but one of them is to create the agendas for your meetings. And I'd like to ask you about the decision to place the $4.5 million final approval of the first-floor City Hall renovations on the consent. And why you chose to do that?
Well, the city manager does the agenda and I can influence it. So it's not, I don't agenda set, but we share that with him with the final decision. That is in our capital improvement budget to have done this project. So it has been a project we've been approving on the other floors of City Hall. And so he put it on agenda, on, on consent. And although it's a big number, it, the budget for it did have to get increased. And so it goes into the incremental increase because of the size of that. Below, I think, $85,000, he's able to sign contracts for himself. So you're right, I could have put it on open session and yet we've been watching, you know, this come through. It's, it's been in our finance committee every time we go through the capital improvement budget, you know, the, the progression of the improvements to City Hall, which are now, you know, faced with, you know, making it much more open, you know, in the, in the lobby area and this is the second floor as well. So it's a, it's a big project, but will be really spectacular for the community, for our community rooms. So.
One more?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I wanted to ask about Measure D, this year's Measure D.
Oh, yeah. I know. And that was, you know, that was our firefighter Measure D too.
It's our number, it's our letter, I guess.
It's our, it's our lucky number for something.
Given your, given your preference to have a lot of community input, some would say that shrinking the council from nine to seven would, would seem a little bit like a conundrum there. I'm just wondering what, what are the strong arguments that you think will kind of override the idea that you'd have more people representing our residents?
Well, I, I'm fine either way. Everybody knew, I think, that I was a 49-51 on this one, so I haven't publicly endorsed it because I really would like the community to have this decision. And I know it's been out there ever since I knew how many people we had on city council. And I don't think we'll be harmed with seven and I think Palo Alto likes having nine, some do. I think people in Palo Alto like being able to access a council member and knowing that they have some similar pull to other people. I know that everybody has their own style of being a council member. I have tried to operate by reaching out and making connections, you know, up and down the peninsula. I'm on the Peninsula League of Cities Board and I'm the backup for Northern California Power Agency, so I get to see dams and all kinds of things. And, and I like making those connections because I need to make a phone call sometimes and I like being able to have that phone call answered. And I've learned that, you know, we have to do that, but not all council members, you know, choose to operate that way. So I think that we'll still get that bundle, but I don't think we'll be harmed by going to seven either.
I'm surprised to hear you say that you don't have a position on this. You were the one that participated in the Dear Colleague memo that brought this to the council in the first place and wanted it approved within one week of having brought it to the council so that it could get on the 2013 ballot.
Well, I, I don't think we ever intended to have it rush the ballot, but we wanted to keep the options open back when we produced the memo. And quite frankly, Bill, we have changed our council elections. So it used to be you could put anything on in November because it was either, you know, it was never a special election. And so the, the consciousness, I apologize to the community for not recognizing that all of a sudden they are special elections. But my interest was some of the other items on that memo and we wrote them together and we thought, well, why don't we go ahead and ask council if they want to go ahead and put the reduction of, of council, of, you know, the council members on the ballot? And I did support it to put it out there for the community. So just as I supported changing the council cycle, I think that it's a good time to include the community in that question, which has, which, you know, has been from many people a staunch position of wanting to see it changed.
So the only other substantive proposal as part of that Dear Colleague memo is to do away with, or to, to extend term limits to three terms?
Right, yes.
Is that the one that you cared more about?
That's the one that, yeah, I cared more about that. Yeah. Because we're reaching out and doing the type of work that you need to do in Palo Alto with all of the impacts that are coming across the state right now. I'm waiting to sign a letter to the FCC right now to make sure that municipalities get to do fiber because now it's gone from 11 states that are not allowed to let their cities do fiber to 20 states in the nation that they won't let fiber roll out through a municipality. We like keeping our local control and it's, it's, and the sticks and the rules just constantly change in navigating those. I'm not sure I could be up for a third term. I sometimes wonder if I'm up for a second term. So, you know, it's, it's, but it is, it's a big learning curve and a lot of responsibility to keep track of all of that and to try to figure out how to integrate it into our life here in Palo Alto.
Great. Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay.